Boulder County Commissioners now back in session. Next on the agenda will be a request for bids, proposals, qualifying, open.
All right Commissioners, we did not receive any bids for the St. Jordan and Bassam renovation project.
No?
No. I was talking to Mr. Shuler yesterday, not Attorney Shuler, Mr. Shuler, our architect. And I was discussing it when he talked about re-advertising and different things. Commissioner, we are too close to spring break and to the summer break, which is our busy season on St. George Island, so I would ask the Board to entertain some emotion or action, allowing us to delay this project until the end of summer, and we'll re-advertise and try to, you know, do a better job, I guess, if that's possible, of getting the word out there to some of the contractors. Apparently, there was a couple of interested, and they called and they said to us, "We're so sorry, we let the date just sneak up on us and we couldn't get our information in on time." But, to put it off right now, Commissioners, for another couple of weeks, it's probably a two-month, two-and-a-half-month job. I guess, in short, Commissioners, I do not want to relive Carabelle Bassam project all over again.
That was eight months.
So, I would really, really like if you guys would consider putting it off till the end of the summer. We'll start the advertisement process then, hopefully we'll get it done by the end of the year, the latest beginning of the new year.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you--
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any renovations that need to be done that is, I mean, important enough to go ahead and do something about them? Like, is there a danger there?
No, it wasn't like Carabelle where the roof was leaking and there were electrical issues.
Nah, that's a--
No, I'm saying it's not like that.
Okay, it's not like Carabelle.
Yeah, it's not like Carabelle, yes, yes, ma'am.
Because we have water in the electrical box.
Yes, yes, Carabelle was more dire, that you guys, you and Commissioner Lockley and, I mean, the whole Board talked about that, you know.
They accommodate the people through till summer, or till the end of summer?
Yes, I think it will. And I'll stop and give the District Commissioner a chance to jump in.
Michael and I spoke about this yesterday, and I'm agreeing with what he's said. Matter of fact, this is where we come to collectively talking about. This is, this project is not about safety, it's just about making it more accommodating, you know, better facilities overall. But, to try to start it in the middle of when we know people are going to be coming there, I just don't think it would be prudent on our part. So, I'm gonna put that in the form of a motion that we delay until September, October, whatever time we deem to be the best to rebid it.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
Yeah, mostly the whole list is of cosmetics, but--
For the most part, yes, sir.
Cosmetic accommodations.
You're making your asset bigger, more, more--
It's any excessive--
Age age, compliance, yeah.
Yeah, but for the most part, yes, sir.
We do have a motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
All right. The next one, well, you want to do the one with that money first? That's the next, the Bay Shore Drive, okay, yeah. Oh, all right, so the next item, first of all, I'm just pointing Mark Carrion, who used to be here assisting Michael, but Mark Carrion just mowed the dive the other day, so he's been out, so we'll be opening these things. The first one is a request for proposals for construction engineering services on the sidewalk on Bay Shore Drive, so there's no, there's no dollar money in this thing, which is an out too, as submitted. Again, this is for the construction engineering inspection services for Bay Shore Drive, and the first one we open up is EXP, EXP, U.S. Services, and their mailing address is Tallahassee. EXP, U.S. Services, mailing address Tallahassee, where apparently are, have offices around the sixth Second one is AHE, All Day Howell Engineering out of Marietta, Florida. Second one is AHE Engineering, Marietta, Florida. Third one is North Florida Professional Services out of Lake City, Florida. North Florida Professional Services out of Lake City, Florida. Fourth one is CW, CWR Contracting, CW Roberts Contracting out of Tallahassee, Florida, and again, they're apparently putting in--
Oh, are you sure?
I'm not sure about this one, because they don't do CEI, they do construction. So, we're gonna put, this says CEI, so I know this is Dewberry Engineering, CEI, let's, Mr. Shuler, we think we might have a bid there with numbers in it, should we open it or not open it? I guess we need to open and make sure.
How many bids are we, we've got RFQs--
Well, these are RFQs, but CW Roberts doesn't usually do engineering, they usually do bids, so I wonder if they--
I'm with CW Roberts, that is a bid.
That is a bid, okay, then we're gonna give it back to you--
Have it reviewed by the committee, and the committee can make a recommendation whether it's compliant or not compliant.
I don't know, Bush, well, I hate to open, I hate opening, get him to this event, in case there's a business bid later.
We're not wanting to read it at that level.
I'll just make sure, okay.
Make sure, identify--
It's a bid, it's a bid.
This, the bids have already been taken on that project, haven't they?
I, I--
Yeah.
No?
Yeah, the bids have already been taken and it's not been awarded.
It's definitely--
It's not been awarded and the project come up over--
That's right, they had to cut it back, you're right, 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 so--
Well, the project come in, the project came in overbid and FDOT agreed to add some more money to it, to the lowest bid.
And I'll be honest, this is just--
M of Tallahassee--
That's correct, that's correct.
I'll look for that later on my report.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, well, Mr. Shuler, can I just give this back to the bidder?
No, sir.
No, it's Tony Rock.
It belongs to us now.
Okay.
I would recommend we just, you bring all of the applicants publicly, let's have the Board turn all of those documents over to the review committee, the review committee can come back and make a recommendation whether they are or not compliant or aren't them.
Right. Huh. Yeah, the description is Bay Shore Drive Sidewalk Improvement, so I'm not sure what was wrong.
And as far as the numbers in there, we have the right to hold those as a non-public record for, I think it's either 30 or 45 days, so we're not, we're not going to be giving their numbers out anywhere.
Can we keep that together?
Well, I'll give that to the Board, so it's the same report file, right?
Then that goes into the same RFQs that are going, so the review committee needs to look at all of those and make a decision.
Okay, all right. The next one is derelict vessels, we do have bids on derelict vessels, this is additional funding.
Motion-- Motion to send it to the review committee.
I'm making a motion, we send it to the review committee and they come back with a recommendation.
Just for the record, who is the review committee?
Mark Carrion is head of it, and it's Mark, could be Whitney, could be me, could be Michael, I'll be honest, I can't remember who Mark set up on this committee.
There's a standing committee?
Standing committee, yes.
Okay.
We do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, seconded by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussions? Send this to the review committee. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Well, I just, first of all, memory, the bids we're opening now revolve some additional money we got from the derelict vessel removal, and this, Mike, I was just kind of just remind them, because there was some action between Franklin and another county, right?
Gulf County.
Okay.
That's the last document that I looked at, was removing that derelict vessel.
So, the derelict vessel removal?
Yeah, so these are, these funds are associated with that joint project.
Yes, there's the funds that we've, we found, we had, we did have the issue with the, not knowing about it until the last minute because of a problem with FWC's website, but the funds are there, and later in my report, you're gonna read where, I'm gonna read, where we have a memorandum of understanding between us and Gulf County to remove the vessel, that one trip boat, that's, I think it's on the western bank or the other side--
That's correct.
Right over the line, they agreed to it, it's not a problem, we just need to agree to it and then have the, have it executed.
One boat he's talking about is you go around Pin Hook and start up the Apalachicola River, it's on the west bank, we found out that was in Gulf County, so we did a memorandum of understanding with the Gulf County, Boulder County Commissioners, that it would be all right if Franklin County received the money to remove that derelict vessel, but it was on their side of the river, so they agreed to allow Franklin County to solicit bids and remove that and clean up the environment for both communities. As we all know, the water runs down in Apalachicola Bay, so--
Where did the boat actually from, Chairman?
The boat is actually from Alabama, it went up the river during a storm many years ago, and on the way back, hit a log, moved over to the west bank, and the boat sunk right there, and it's been there for many years. And getting the tank, the oil tanks and the fuel tanks, and just removing other vessels will clean the environment of, and especially what comes down the river and into Apalachicola Bay, so--
The reason I mention that, because these bids probably have, as I recall, Mark handled this with FWC, we had to go out and actually get specific quotes on each boat, so this bid will have a total amount, but the boats are already identified in the bids, so it's not like we have an option of changing what boats are gonna be removed, these are specific to this bid.
Two more vessels, is that right, two or three vessels?
Yeah, so total of three, total of three vessels.
Three, one is in Carabelle and two is up the Apalachicola River.
Right, so the total bid on this, I'm sorry, this is Honda Enterprises, Hondo Enterprises, Honda, H-O-N-D-O, Hondo Enterprises from the Funyac Springs. The total bid for three boats is $63,612. $63,612.
That's for all three?
That's for all three.
The second one does not have a name on the outside, so we'll go up on the inside. The second bid is from MS Dockside Marina, MS Dockside Marina, and it looks to me like they are bidding, oh, this is out of Carabelle, and they're bidding on only one of the boats, they're bidding on the sailboat only, I think this is a sailboat in the Carabelle River, yes, sailboat on the east flat, this is, they're bidding on the sailboat on the east bank of the Carabelle River. Let me just make sure that's the only one they're bidding on, because it looks like it is. Okay, so they're just bidding on one of the boats, and their total bid for that one boat is $9,223. $9,223. All right, the third one is for all three boats, and this is from Morgan Marine Salvage and Recovery, Morgan Marine Salvage and Recovery, I'll be honest, I'm not quite sure, they are out of, it looks like out of Biloxi, Mississippi, which, I'm sorry, no, no, that's a letter of recommendation. Morgan Marine, it's out of Freeport, I'm sorry, Morgan Marine Salvage is out of Freeport, Florida, and their total bid for all three boats is $49,500. $49,500. That's it, and that's the three bids we had, two complete for three boats and one up just for one. So, I recommend turning this over to Mark for his review and, you know, conformance with the FMC grant.
Pleasure to the Board.
Question.
Pleasure.
They'll be in compliance if bid on one?
Well, I'm not sure, I'll be honest, I'm not sure how it's gonna work, because I think you need to bid on all three, because we want all three. I'm not sure that even if that one was a low, I'm, my question is, would be, if that one is the low bidder on that one boat, can we select that out? But my quick review is, he's not the low bidder anyway, so I don't think it's gonna matter.
I think the bids were sent out for removal of the three derelict vessels and not worked, so I'm not sure if they complied with the bidding process. You did make a motion, Commissioner Massie, to send this to the review committee?
Yeah.
Seconded by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question, if I could. Just to clarify, because I've been asked so many questions about this, the list they're working off is the list that FWC already has, correct?
An approved list--
Of derelict vessels.
Leftover from the original, where we, when the funding end, we had a list that was, boats remain on the list, yes, sir. It's not to say we're not looking for more, but we're trying to--
But they have to be on the list--
They have to be on the list, and we don't create the list, FWC creates the list. We can give them ideas and names of boats, but like I said before, Commissioner, if the boat has a known owner, FWC is gonna make all efforts to make that owner take the boat.
That's the key, and I have some emails too, why can't you use the money for this? That's the key.
Looking on the website, since this has come up again and people have been questioning about it, they do make a distinction between an abandoned vessel and a derelict vessel. There's a pretty sizable difference, so I think some of the questions I've been giving have been about abandoned vessels, but I just wanted to clarify while we're talking about--
But we'll, as you get questions or community, public gets questions to call in, if they're boats, there may be boats that FWC is unaware about that could be derelict and could be put on the list, so those people, you know, have information, you know, to bring it forward.
Thank you.
We do have a motion and second on the floor, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda would be Mr. Joe Crozier, ARPC discussion. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning Commissioners, Joe Crozier, Appalachian Regional Planning Council. So, first of three things, you don't need a concrete slab, it's not required, that second wall is all that you need. Clay County has one in the middle of a grass field, it's fine. The second is, I submitted language to Calhoun County about the oil drilling as well, and we basically talked to the Water Management District, DEP, DEO, and no one else was sending them any comments, so we worked with all them and kind of gave them some suggestions and some best practices, some ways that, some best available ideas and available information, and scaring them suggestions, we don't think it was received very well, but, you know, we did give our support of the idea and the best ways that they could move forward safely. And lastly, I talked to a few of you already about the conference that we're hosting, so we're working with, the ARPC is also host, or holds the Riparian County Stakeholder Coalition, as most of you know. We're working with Sierra Club, the Riverkeeper, and some others to hold a conference about the future of the Apalachicola River and Bay in Tallahassee. There will be people there from the Corps, FWC, Fish and Wildlife, the Nature Conservancy, all across the board, speaking about it. Bob Graham will be the keynote speaker on Thursday night, Senator Bob Graham. We will be talking about science on the first day, and basically how the low flows are affecting the river and the lack of sediment and all that kind of stuff. The second day will be a little bit more of the legal update with the Corps and some people from the University of Georgia, Florida State, UF, among others, and then on the last day is when we'd invite you, we think it would be the best use of your time if anyone wanted to join us. We'll be talking about the economics, the future of that, how a transboundary institute could be set up between Georgia, Florida, and even Alabama, talking about just the best way to collaborate and the best way to use the restored dollars moving forward. So, I know Commissioner Parrish, we had spoken a little bit, but, so we think it would be great if you could come on Friday. I've already went to Gulf County and told them the same thing. We would host, or we facilitate up to 20 commissioners or your delegates between the six Riparian Counties. I'm doing the circuit and inviting everybody, so just let us know if you want to come. And Friday afternoon, we're taking all those people on the river afterwards, so are there any questions about all that stuff I just told you?
Not really, but if I come, I want to come all the day.
Okay.
I want to understand what they're saying, if they're telling the truth, as I know it. I'm having this Board, I've been representing this Board on these river issues for 11 years. I was kind of stunned that I was not invited to speak at this conference, to let them know how the people of Franklin County feel. I know there's a lot of different speakers in there, and I looked at all the speakers that are there, but it was kind of discouraging that nobody from Franklin County Government was asked to come and put in the two cents of the county government that represents this county in this river conference. I've had a lot of discussions with the Corps of Engineers, there's things they're doing that I don't agree with, and there's a lot of other things in there that I don't agree with, and I have my reasons for that. So, if the Board so desires for me to go, I want to go all three days. I want to be in on the scientific and see what they're saying about that, right on through and right on through. But I would like an opportunity to speak, and I'd like to speak while everybody's there to listen, not when the Corps is done gone, and not when U.S. Fish and Wildlife is done gone. I think there needs to be a place, a placeholder put there where I can come and address and let them address the concerns of the people of Franklin County. And that was my intention, if I'm not gonna be allowed to do that, then there's no sense of me going, because I can't speak for the people of Franklin County. There's no sense of me attending the event. So, that was the discussion I had with the Director of Administrative Services when Commissioner Jones sent that out to the Commissioners, and that's my concern. I know most of the people that are there that's been invited to speak, from Steve Lightman right on down, I know all these people and dealt with them, and we have differences of opinions on some issues. One thing we don't have a difference of opinion is, is how can we move forward with the low water flows that we're getting down the Apalachicola River, and how that affects the Tupelo trees in Gulf County, and how it's affecting our oyster industry here in Franklin County, and there are a lot of water users up and down the river system that'll be affected by these low water flows, not just Apalachicola Bay. So, I do have some expertise in all those issues, and I want to be there if so desired by this Board, but I don't want to just come on Friday.
Okay.
I want to be there for the entire conference. I want to be able to network with some of these people, and try to make our feelings known as we are the last person that gets the freshwater flows down in Apalachicola Bay and the detrimental effects it's having on us at this current time.
Can I ask a question?
Can you get him in to speak?
Yes, sir, and we certainly encourage you to come all three days, we just, we would love to have you, we just wanted to let you know when the best bang for your buck would be, but you're certainly invited to be there the whole time, and we were waiting until we had a chance to give everybody the opportunity, all of the local governments were invited to invite you to speak, but we're still about six weeks out and we were, we left a blank spot for local government to--
Well, you know, my concern is if I don't know what's said on the first day and I don't know what's said on the second day, how can I respond on the third day?
Yes, sir.
You understand what I'm saying?
I'm making a motion for Chairman Parrish to go up for the three days.
We have a motion by Commissioner Massie?
Can I say--
Yes, ma'am.
I want to know what's happening. I want to know what's happening. What's happening in that the state agencies and the other agencies is not looking at Franklin County Government no more? Why is that? Why is that? Same thing with Department of Ag, I'm gonna get on that. Same thing with Department of Ag, not looking at us for the oyster license, not even, and we're saying we want to consider look, you know, taking it down, nobody wants us to. And we represent all the people of Franklin County, all the people. What is going on, Mr. Chairman, that we're not being respected on behalf of the people of Franklin County? I want to know, because I tell you what, I never did think I'd see the day that they did not respect Franklin County on that matter, especially dealing with Apalachicola River issues and Apalachicola Bay issues. I'm just on there, but I second Commissioner Massie's motion on allowing you to speak, and I want you to go for all three days and speak.
Well, I want to know what's said on day one and day two, if I'm gonna speak on day three, so that I can address some of those things.
But I just want to know, y'all--
They may not want, they may not want to hear what we have to say.
Well--
That's the only thing I can figure.
But we say what we need to say to take care of business, right?
That's correct.
That's it, and that's what I'm saying. I am, I am very disappointed at the fact that ARPC has not even contacted them personally. They've always done that.
Well, they're here this morning.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just telling them, I'm putting them on notice, and I'm putting everybody, we've already put the rest of the state on notice, but I'm just saying, we, the people of Franklin County has been very proactive on trying to bring light to the situations in Franklin County, and this Board has helped them do that, and I'm just concerned that when, and I believe totally in home rule, and I'm just surprised that the state nor anyone else around here here lately thinks that they have to come through the county or come to the county and be, you know, be respectful, so anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I might say something, I just want to kind of get back to where we were, because I want to make sure, I don't remember, Mr. Crozier, the dates, what's the dates of this event?
It's March 14th, 15th, and 16th.
Okay.
Way back.
Though Campbell Stadium, sir.
Yeah, Tallahassee. Yeah, I agree, the chairman needs to go, I'm probably myself gonna attempt to go, if I can work it out with my schedule, just because I know it's important to the future of Franklin County. Mr. Crozier's here today because it was brought up at ARPC meeting, and I've done my best to make sure the rest of the Commissioners knew about it. So, I mean, he's here kind of because I got that ball rolling, so, you know, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Sanders, and I disagree with you, but I don't think it has anything to do with ARPC, and Mr. Crozier's catching the brunt of it for something that's not his fault, so--
Well, and we don't want to cheat the match, we don't want to cheat the match.
So, anyway, I'm just trying to get us back to where we're going. So, anyway, yeah, I agree, and if I can work my schedule, I'm gonna try to attend the event as many days as I can as well, because it's important.
Well, Mr. Chairman--
Yes?
Put in a, for any Commissioner that wants to go. I meant they can go, but they ain't got--
I had that motion, any Commissioner wants to go--
I want to speak.
Yeah, anyone that wants to go--
Any Commissioner wants to go.
Any--
Yeah, I made my second reflect, I was saying--
We do have a motion and second on the floor.
What's the date?
Any further discussion?
15th, 16th.
All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Motion passes. Again, I didn't mean to come off as rough, if I come off rough to you, Mr. Crozier, I was just kind of stating the facts and stating my concern, because this particular government does represent the entire Franklin County region, and I think they need to succeed at the table, and I think our opinions need to be put out there for whoever's there, and without attending the first two days, and you don't know what's said and what science they're delivering, and whether you think it's good science or flawed science, and then that forms your opinion, and your time that you allotted to speak on Friday allows you to address the issues that are most serious and try to make people understand the concerns we have here with our river and our bay.
Yes, sir.
So, as Commissioner Jones said, we're not, I was not trying to get you to take the brunt of my opinion, I was just stating my opinion.
I think he's done just right, because the state of Florida is dishing us, and all the rest of the other people who come up here dishing us, because, you know, everybody trying to get the dollar, but ain't nobody trying to get the right information.
Any other comments, Mr. Crozier?
I will put on the record that Commissioner Jones was the first Commissioner of any county that I invited last year. I did think of him first.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing, Cabo Select Properties Land Use and Rezoner Requests. Resign?
Yes, sir. Today, we have a notice of a land use change. The Franklin County Board of County Commissioners proposes to adopt the following by ordinance, an ordinance changing the land use change to the following parcel of land in Franklin County. A two-acre parcel lying in Section 13, Township Seven South, Range Five West, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida, as shown on the attached map, be changed from industrial to residential. And before we begin, I do believe that we have had a couple of denied parcels in there for the land use change in the past. April of 2016, there was a request for denial, or a denied project for Aaron Ray. Here's the map, and this is Mill Road, and then at the split, this is around 529 Mill Road, you go down this road here, and this is the parcel.
And we've had two other people come forward wanting to have land use changed, I remember--
Not for this particular property, but Aaron Ray came in 2016 for a parcel located in this area.
That abuts the industrial area?
Yes, sir.
And I think that's a-- What is it currently zoned?
This property is currently zoned industrial.
Okay. I guess this is a public hearing, we should ask for public comment? I guess this is a public hearing. We should, uh, ask for public comment?
Yes, well, actually, we should hear from the applicant first before we take public comment.
Okay.
My name is Beth Barbara. I'm with Coastal Realty Group in Carabelle. I represent the owner of this property here. Um, she's trying to sell it. And most of the requests that she, most, all of the requests that she has gotten is cannot put a mobile home on it. And, um, since it is zoned industrial, since that's all the request, in that area, we're very limited on mobile home properties. And, um, that's why she's making that request. The property that Aaron Ray, uh, was trying to, uh, rezone over in that area, they were trying to rezone into a mobile home park. Um, I believe ten, it's a ten-acre parcel, and they were wanting ten properties out of that one parcel. And she's only trying to change it to mobile home residential for one unit.
This parcel is two acres.
Mr. Chairman, I just asked-
Yes?
So, so Beth, I mean, really, do you know the surrounding owners? I mean, this is kinda odd to have just two acres in the middle of an industrial park. Sort of, I'll be honest, I know you're only representing one parcel, but it's-
I do know, um, I do know the parcel across the street from it, the sixteen-acre parcel, the, the rather large one. Um, that is owned by a family out of, um, Oberden, Georgia. And the owner himself, he has passed away. It's owned by the family and they don't look to, to sell it anytime soon.
This, this falls on industrial with Buckeye on it all, you know.
Right. The only working, um, parcel is behind it, the, right there, and that's a sawmill. Uh, the other is an abandoned mobile home, um, to the right of that. And then the other property is forestry. On the other side of it is forestry. It backs up to the forest.
I, I, you know, I would wish it was a more comprehensive approach rather than putting two acres out in the middle of what is otherwise industrial, which your only industrial property over there in Carabelle. And I'm not just saying that there's not much of industrial use, but let's look at the overall picture. Somebody needs to come together and talk to the owners out there and come up with a better, to me, it was better plan for the, this, take the two acres and turn it into a mobile home, one mobile home lot in the middle of industrial area. What happens? Something comes in with industrial uses? And then the mobile home is gonna be all, get all that problem. I just see it's a con, if we have the conflict, we ought to deal with all of the area there.
We would welcome a lot of industrial uses in Carabelle. Our employment is quite low, so that would be great, but at this time, I, you know.
I just see, I just see a potential conflict to put a mobile home out there. Someone does come along, then we'll do something.
Well, I mean, did we have the same issue with, twice before, as people's come in and wanted to do the same thing?
Well, the other ones, I, I know one of them was, they were trying to put a mobile home next to our one area. I thought it was one of the reasons. I mean, it's not illegal to put a, to put a two acres of mobile home in the middle, you know, it's not illegal, but it's, I'm just worried about the overall picture.
And I've had several calls, Ms. Beth, on it, uh, in the area.
I'm sure.
Oh, we need to call for public comment now?
Yes, sir.
Any public comment on this issue, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning. Cecile Hans, five twenty-nine Mill Road, right across the street from, uh, where you all were talking. Um, and also, uh, joint owner with, uh, Harriet Hans Mosteller on the yet- place that's on, on the map. Um, we, we are in opposition to this rezoning. And there are several reasons, if you allow me time, just to go through some of this, the thought process here. Um, this is a small parcel. It's surrounded by a longstanding industrial designated zoning area. That, that industrial zoning's been there probably since the comp plan came into being. Um, there's, uh, an existing industrial activity right next to this parcel, as was stated. It's, um, something, you know, the sawmill, it does operate. And it can be loud because it is a sawmill, a small owner. And, um, so, you know, just the juxtaposition of having something already existing and next to zoning something residential and pulling in somebody that's gonna try to live happily in the woods will not happen. You'll have conflict. Um, I, it really has the potential impact of having two owners at odds with each other when the existing industrial use is what's going on there. Anecdotal discussions and field observation and aerial photos indicate a large portion of this is actually in wetlands as well. And in regards to that, it hasn't been delineated by FDEP or any other regulatory agency to say what's wetland and what isn't. And, you know, you need some space. If, there's no active electrical service to that parcel. There's no water well drilled to that parcel. There's no septic system in that parcel. So you're looking at trying to cite something in wetlands that currently does not exist. Um, rezoning this one small area would just be like spot zoning. It, it, and it, as Mr. Pierce said, you know, it just, it, in my words, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have an industrial setting and then plop a residential piece right in the middle of it. And again, there is active industrial activity right next door to that parcel. So again, I appreciate the time to, uh, speak to the, the board. And I would just, uh, hope that you will see fit to deny this rezoning request. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come forward, state your name for the record.
My name's William Parker. I own the, um, property right next door, which is the sawmill. And I'm concerned, Miss Cecile said everything I was gonna say. But I'm concerned about the noise ordinance that might come with it, cuz it is really loud. Um, and I just wanted to put on record that I object also.
Thank you for your comment. How, how many acres around this is, is currently zoned industrial and were there ever any industrial uses of the property?
Well, the Buckeye, Buckeye Cellular plant was out there, and we zoned all that property. Uh, I, I don't-
And I, and I think, uh, River Road Trucking was there historically also, in that very general vicinity right there. And that's, I think, a relic building is from that activity.
So, so my question is, has there ever been an environmental review after all these industrial uses were used on this property?
No, the zoning, when Mark Carr and I both got here in nineteen eighty-eight, that was already, was, had just, actually just closed down as an active Buckeye site.
Right.
And so it had been industrial use before we got here, really before zoning was in effect. So I don't know if Buckeye did any, um, assessment after they, when they sold the property to other people. I just don't know.
As, as far as I recall and, and know, in terms of if we're talking about designation of wetlands or something to that nature, I don't know nothing like that and my knowledge was ever done. There was, that was an active sawmill site with a, um, a treating facility. And there were chemicals involved in that facility and there was-
That's what I'm talking about.
Uh, the, the Buckeye mill portion. And there was a remediation, uh, from groundwater, can, potential groundwater contamination at that site years ago in the eighties. And those groundwater wells are all taken up now. Everything was given a clean bill of health back at that time.
Okay.
But that, there, there was remediation done back there. I think PCPs were used back in the day. But, but all that was remediated.
Uh, I, you know, the city water ran?
No, no, this, you have to drill a well. And, um, so you'd have to go in there and provide all the basic services for that parcel as a individual landowner.
That, that was my main concern when I was speaking about that is industrial uses, and now you're gonna drill a well and drink water from there? Whether that was safe to rezone an industrial place to an R one residential or a mobile home?
There, there was actually even closer to that because I, I was in the environmental group at Buckeye. And during my tenure, um, there was some, uh, waste oil that was removed from that site, uh, at the River Road Trucking area. And I, to the best of my knowledge, there was never any, uh, remediation required for that, but there was, uh, and we talked about that earlier, that the county needs an outlet for, uh, people to bring their used oil to, so.
Yes.
So, but, so that's a two-acre parcel, and you see how much land is going industrial around it, so it's probably, if that's two acres, I'm just making a guess, it's sixty to eighty acres total of industrial site out there?
Any other public comment? Pleasure aboard.
I'm, I'm making a motion not to land zone.
To deny the land zone, rezoning?
Yeah, not rezoning.
We do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders?
I mean, right, if I could, did I have the land use and the rezoning?
Correct, because there's, there's two issues on the table, the land use and the rezoning. Commissioner Massey, would you amend your motion to-
Yes, sir.
Now I'm in my second to reflect.
Let the record reflect, Commissioner Sanders also amended her second. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Most of them cares? Next will be, let it, next will be Mr. Chris Langston. Langston and Associates Request. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Commissioners, my name's Chris Langston. Um, I'm here today to address the board, to present some information, new information. It dates back to November twenty-one, at, at least your second meeting in November. Don't know if I got the date exactly right. I'm going to provide the board with some information that I've gathered, um, since that meeting. Because in that meeting, I feel like the board was misled with some information that ultimately led the board into voting on a letter that was written the next meeting that I was not, uh, there at, which I will address later in the, in my proposi- or, uh, in my proposal. And, um, first I wanna say, in the meeting, my initial proposal was about just a simple support letter from Franklin County about a mining activity up Highway sixty-seven for the purpose of a mining fossilized shell. Ultimately, to be put in the bay for the oyster habitat restoration that's located all along the Gulf Coast. Uh, in that meeting, I know that there was some concern and some allegations made uh, about adverse impacts on the adjacent wetlands, rivers and tributaries ultimately having an adverse and deathly impact on the bay. Uh, there was also some, uh, apparent concerns about groundwater contamination and potable well contamination. And I can say that I've gone to Tallahassee, uh, met with DEP, met with several individuals, um, met with them individually as well as electronically. Uh, and I'd like to read a letter that was given to me by Katie Collins, who's the Environmental Administrator Mining and Mitigation Program. And at the bottom of it, now, of course, I will share the letter with you, so you can read the entire letter, but I'm gonna go ahead and kinda cut to the chase. Your letter requested, my letter is what this is in response to. Your letter requested complete history and results pertaining to complaints at the Liberty Sixty-seven Mine. Based on our records, it does not appear that the Mining and Mitigation Program has previously received any complaints in regards to this mine site. At this time, we are not aware of any groundwater concerns or information that would indicate that there was a problem with any potable wells south of mine site. Meaning, what that means is, and I've got, with the Oculus, uh, I've done some research as well. And there, all their site visits find that mine site being compliant. What that ultimately means is, there's no impact to the adjac- adjacent wetlands. There's no impact to the surface water pollution or anything like that that would ultimately have an adverse impact on the bay. Um, and I can also say, I know that there were some concerns about wells, potable wells getting muddied. I can say with definitive, uh, answers that, I'm not saying that it didn't happen, but I am saying with definite, it was not caused by that mining operation north of the, you know, north of where this had, uh, apparently taken place. Um, I would also kinda like the board to understand that during that same meeting, there was a concern about the market. And I am, Michael, if you don't mind. So they can take a look at it. That's proposal I've gotten from over in Louisiana. It's approximately twenty-two thousand tons for oyster cults depositions. It's grouped out of Louisiana. Uh, it's a big contract. It's gonna, again, guarantee jobs with the operation of this mine. It's gonna stimulate the economy. Uh, I'm on the agenda tonight with the City of Appalachia to discuss Battery Park and the leasing of part of that park, which will also be an immediate, uh, revenue generating income for the City of Appalachia. Uh, you know, there's gonna be jobs there, loading hopper barges to take that material out. Um, and I can, you know, with that being said, you know, we're getting into the economy of everything. But also, ultimately, there was also some concern, like you stated earlier in, in one of your conversations, you're talking about how the government's not coming to Franklin County and showing you, uh, any respect. Well, I'm here showing you respect. The ultimate decision is gonna lay with the gov- governor and cabinet on this. But, you know, I'm trying to get local support with this to make the process a little bit easier. But to address some of your concerns, because in the meeting that the letter was written, I think there was some concern by a board member and another individual about how the state has allowed this proposal to get this far. Because I have met with several people at Department of Agriculture, DEP, and several other places. But I want to read a few, uh, items contained in the Tate-Sell State Forest Management Plan, which is easily obtained off the website. And it goes into, and I first, I wanna start out first with, thank you. Uh, Objective Two, actually, yeah. Objective Two, and I'm trying to figure it out, let's see. Anyways, I'm gonna go ahead and read it. It just says legislative and executive constraints. There are no known legislative or executive constraints specifically directed towards Tate-Sell State Forest. And what that means is Tate-Sell State Forest is actively seeking ways to generate revenue within Tate-Sell State Forest to offset the management cost. Now, I can say in the same management plan, pursue additional revenue generating possibilities through miscellaneous forest product sales, uh, recreation fees and/or leases. And that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking to buy the land. I'm looking to lease the land for mineral rights. Of course, we will be paying a royalty to the state. Um, and that also will offset the, uh, management of Tate-Sell State Forest. But that's something that I need to discuss with them, with you all. I'm here today to address, uh, the concerns that I've addressed now. And by the way, I've also, if you want to meet, I'm open to meet one-on-one, which I've met with you some already. Uh, this is not a precedent-setting case. Uh, there's twenty-one hundred acre, there's twenty-one hundred acres of submerged state-owned lands. Uh, and then there's approximately twenty-six, uh, dry side leases that the state already does, two of which are for mining. I believe there's a couple more. I just, uh, didn't bring them with me. Which ultimately, uh, brings me to the fact, which the ultimate decision was to, on December eighth, two thousand and seventeen, the board decided to write a letter. And I actually took the time to, uh, watch the, that, that commission meeting. Uh, and what this letter states and what was voted on during that commission, I, I, you know, I don't see, this is different than what you voted on, is what I'm trying to say. And I guess what I'm here today, does anybody need a copy of this letter? Cuz I've got several of them. Because I've got several of them. So you can see what was written. Does anybody need a copy? Okay. And what I would like to do is, I'd like to, somebody to make a motion today to rescind that letter and rewrite a support letter. Because I can tell you, the benefit, I've already made the proposal last to the benefit, I think it's redundant. And with the number of jobs that's going to be created countywide, the material's going to go into the bay for the oyster habitat restoration efforts Gulf-wide. It's no secret that the fossilized shell, which, Mr. Shuler, can I carry this? Yep, there's a couple of them there, you can just give it to the board. And it's a, basically, it's a picture of the actual spat recruitment on fossilized shell versus actually the material that's currently being put out there. And you can see at the top of the page, it's fossilized shell versus right down the line, high-cal limestone or granite, whatever you want to call it, that the Department of Agriculture brought in. This will be a local source versus bringing in a material from out of state. And with that being said, it also goes against, you know, it's got a higher spat count than green shell, shuck shell, however you want to refer to it as. You've got a source here locally, it's right in your backyard. And simply, I'm here today to see if I could get a support letter out of the, out of the commission. Because I am, you know, seeking that, local support's very important. And I will be seeking local support elsewhere as well. And with the concerns about the mining operation being addressed and kind of redirected, does anybody have any real concerns about what this operation might do, any drawbacks? Because, to be honest with you, I see no drawbacks to it. Everybody I've talked to, business-wise, local-wise, and even, you know, outside of the local area, it's a win-win situation for everybody. I see no drawbacks. And if you see a drawback, I'd like to have an opportunity to address it. Is there any drawbacks that this commission sees?
Motion again, will that?
Your motion is to rescind the previous letter? And send a letter of support? We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley to rescind the previous letter?
Wait just a minute. Let's just talk about this for a minute. The letter that we sent was nothing about the support of the Lime Rock Mine. It was about the usage of the, of the roads that was bought with preservation money. That's what the letter was about. It had nothing to do, Mr. Noel, with the Lime Rock Mine itself. And that's what he's talking about. See where I'm coming, see where I'm coming from? It has nothing to do with the Lime Rock Mine. We did not say, we did not, we did not enter opinion on that. What we did was, we said we did not feel like it was right to lease property that was bought for conservation. That's what we said. Through coral funding for ever Florida and Preservation Two Thousand money. That's what we said. We never once said anything about the Lime Rock Mine itself. See what I'm saying?
The letter, he's going to bring up a copy, I believe I've got enough copy for each, for each commissioner. Is there only four? I got one right there. I'm sorry. Go ahead and read that letter. Because it specifically points out Chris Langston, Gene Langston, and Langston and Associates, and my proposal, which ultimately would be the fossilized shell mine.
This was, this was late, this is, this is what, the property was purchased with funding for Preservation Two Thousand, Florida Forever, that's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about. It never once said anything about the Lime Rock Mine itself. It talks about the land surrounding that was bought with preservation money. Am I right? Michael? You wrote the letter?
Yes, ma'am.
It has no meaning with the Lime Rock Mine itself. It's talking about the property that is, the use of the property.
Well, the use, you understand that it's spelled out in the management plan, the uses that are allowed, as well as what they're, they even address right here.
Well, let me tell you something, Chris. Our job up here is to look at things. You have came up here, and you and your father in the past have came up here, and I have sat here very quietly and not said anything. I did not say anything when your daddy came up before me and blasted me at that meeting that you were at, and questioned my ethics. Now, I'm going to tell you something, this goes way back with your daddy and me. It does not have anything to do with this. And for you to bring this back up here and try to disrespect me as a commissioner, this is what he's doing. He's disrespecting me as a commissioner. Because this is my area, he knows it's my area. This is, I'm more versed in this area than anybody else sitting in this room, even Chris Langston.
I don't think so.
Okay?
I don't think so.
I think, I think I do know more about it. I think I do know more about it. But you are trying to get what you want by going to each individual commissioner and pushing it, pushing it, pushing it. Had you sat down and talked with me, you would have found that I was very open-minded to things. Because at that meeting, I was not even going to say anything. I was going, I was going to let you do that. But the way that y'all come out like a bull in a china closet, and your daddy questioned my ethics.
How did he question your ethics, Cheryl?
You questioned my ethics about saying that I had gotten to the commissioners before me. Yes, he did say that.
No, he didn't, he said, it was thoughtful.
Yes, he did.
I'm not here to, I'm not here to argue, Ms. Cheryl.
I'm not either, but you, you're here, you're here, and you thrown out into windows about Katie Collins said ain't nobody put a complaint in there. Katie Collins was not even there when all this transpired with the.
Excuse me, Ms. Cheryl, they did an extensive background research on it.
Yeah. We need to move forward with this, and you can't speak while somebody else is trying to speak. You have to wait your turn, we gave you your turn, nobody interrupted you.
Understood.
You have to pay the same respect to the commissioner.
I understand.
Okay, so, let's, you know, we need to move forward.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, before you do, what I just handed out to the commissioner and to Chris was a response from Department of Agriculture for that letter that I sent that he, that he made copies of. That they did, you know, that, it's just an acknowledgement that they received the letter.
But the thing, the thing I'm trying to say is, Mr. Langston is muddy in the water, trying to say that we have voiced objections to the Lime Rock pit, the Lime Rock mill, and we have not. We have just said, we're concerned with lands being, being used that was other than what was described to be used in the coral program and the Preservation Two Thousand program and the Florida Forever funded. That's all, that's all. And whether he gets his permits with the Lime, for the Lime Rock pit is him and the state. And that's it, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. We need to move forward with this. Commissioner Lockley, did you make a motion a while ago?
Yeah.
Would you restate your motion, please?
What the motion be?
You wanted to issue a letter of support?
Commissioner, the one I have written, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to proceed?
Whatever.
The motion I have written down was a motion by Commissioner Lockley to rescind the letter that the board wrote on December the eighth, twenty-seventeen, and to issue a new letter of support for the Langstons' mining operation, as has been presented here this morning. That's where I wrote down the motion.
Well, I want to send a letter for the operation.
A letter of support for the mining operation?
Yep.
But you wanted to also rescind the, the previous letter? That went with the coral land and the uses of the coral land? Or you just want to send a letter of support for the mining operation?
For the mining.
I, I have noted the amendment to the motion.
We do have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
It's just on the mining operation, what you're doing?
Yep.
We do have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massie, any further discussion?
I would like to ask a question, Mr. Chairman. Does anybody in this room know if lands are designated the ways that, I'm pretty sure Commissioner Sanders and I were the ones that made the motion and seconded the motion with the first letter? Those lands that are bought with those funds are any of those lands being used in the ways that we're prescribed here today? And I, I'm not trying to make it worse, but I do want due diligence. Lands are done with coral funds, and these different funds, are they using them the way that Mr. Langston's prescribed to do, leasing amount and allowing functions?
No, Tate-Sell, I know.
I've got it right here. I've got it right here.
You got it, show it. I think it's pretty pertinent if it's something in writing.
Mr. Morone, anytime we put anybody else on the agenda, they need to submit information before they come to this board. I've not been able to review any of this. And if you're on the agenda and you've got pertinent information pertaining to the subject at hand, it needs to be submitted prior to the meetings where it can be reviewed by the commissioner.
And I did inform Mr. Langston of such rule. Anything he had for the board, I needed ahead of time to Thursday, we would need it to submit to the board for your review. And I said, especially if you have anything new that was not submitted at the last meeting.
Right. And if it's not submitted, then they will be taken off the agenda. We're wasting a lot of time here this morning trying to go pre-ing the information that should have already been presented to this board. So from now on, if somebody wants to be on the Franklin County agenda, they need to submit the pertinent information ahead of time, just as we require you to submit the pertinent information on anything else on this agenda. So if there's an issue, that, that, that information can be disseminated on Monday before Tuesday's meeting without information, we have no idea what he was coming here for this morning. So from here forward, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure the board feels the same way, if somebody's going to be on our agenda, then we need information about what they're going to talk about and the pertinent information relating to the subject matter. So this board can review this stuff. We're sitting here wasting valuable time trying to get the information in a minute's notice. And it's not the proper way to do things.
To go further to Commissioner Drill, that's all I was asking the board, would they rather me validate and search the information independently, or? I have, I'm not throwing any shade at Mr. Langston here in any way. I'm just saying, usually the board comes to me and tells me to research it, present it to you, and then you have a discussion.
If we'd have knew exactly what was being presented today, he might have called you yesterday and asked you to research it. You see what I'm saying? But when you, when you give it to the board the same day of the meeting, you don't have time to do that. Yes, and we don't need to be doing that.
Because there is a discussion about time constraints, I do have other information, but it's contained in, in the Tate-Sell State Management Plan. But I don't feel like, I think the information you have before you now should be sufficient. It does show how Tate-Sell State Forest was bought with coral funds, but it also has no legislative constraints, which means it does allow for Tate-Sell State Forest to go after the minerals, which also are contained. If I'd have known the questions that were going to be asked today, I, of course, would have provided you beforehand with the pertinent information. I did not believe it was going to come up, that's why I was taking time, I apologize. But I can say, there are several different types of leases. They actually addressed that there's approximately three thousand acres of mineral deposits in this general vicinity that the Tate-Sell State Forest understands. They even addressed the mining of such material for their own purposes, but they found it to be more efficient in the early on when this was drawn up in nineteen ninety-whatever. I can't remember the exact date, it was actually approved on two thousand and seven. So it's actually a little bit more recent than I had previously thought. But they do address the mining activities from borrow pits, mining this exact same material. So the activities are addressed. And my father was also involved in, when they drew this mining, or this plan up, he actually was involved in it from the mining aspect of it. So I too know a lot about this. And the first hurdle I had to jump before I even came before this board was to make sure there was no prohibition against this type of operation. I've already addressed that. That, to me, I mean, I know it's new to you, but it's something that I've done, I did way back when. That was the first question and the first obstacle that we had to basically complete, which was making sure there was no prohibition. Now, I can say there is a prohibition with the coral funds and the Preservation Two Thousand funds. There is no path to ownership. But we are not trying to buy this property. We are going to be leasing this property and paying a royalty to the state, just as we would be doing in any other operation, mining operation. It's just like the current operation, leases it from Rex Lumber, pays them a royalty. We're going to lease the land from the state, pay them a royalty, just like any other lease. This is common practice. I've got it here also contained with several leases that are already in operation in the state. A lot of the same areas, used the same funds. So this is not a precedent-setting idea or precedent-setting case, precedent-setting proposal. It's something that happens all the time at the state level.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Send a letter of support for this mining operation. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed?
I oppose.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, Ms. Marshall Johnson, Clerk of the Court. Okay, Mr. Allen Pierce, Restored Coordinator Report.
My report is fairly lengthy, because I'm trying to get some better to the record, just so everything's clear. First item, though, is really for your information. Provide the board the building permit review of the last three years. I thought it would be beneficial to the board and the public to know the status of the building in the county. In general, the county building industry is slowly but steadily recovering from the housing collapse. In two thousand and four through two thousand and six, housing starts reached a peak of about a hundred and seventy-five homes a year being built in Franklin County. With the collapse of the housing market nationwide, housing starts fell dramatically here as well. At the bottom, in two thousand and nine, the county issued only nineteen permits for new houses. In two thousand and fifteen, the county issued forty-two permits. In two thousand and sixteen, it was fifty-five houses. And then in two thousand and seventeen, fifty-eight new housing starts were issued. In two thousand and seventeen, the county stopped issuing permits for the cities of Carabel and Appalachia. So while we issued fifty-eight houses for the county, there were several houses built in the city. So the total housing starts in the city, including the cities, was more like sixty-five houses. If the estimated value of a new house across the county is three hundred thousand dollars, and using sixty-five housing starts as a number, the housing industry in the county added almost twenty million dollars to the tax base last year. So the housing industry is beginning to come back. And I would say, one of the, one of the issues that you saw this morning- of the issues that you saw this morning was no bids on your renovations. The housing industry's at full capacity right now. Friends of mine are in the housing business, they have almost a year of backlog. So, it's, uh, I'm not sure that things will change that much in September when you go out to bid, but it, you know, it might. But things are pretty well full capacity, uh, for the housing industry here in the county. Number two, provide the board with a copy of the draft, of the county draft grants manual submitted to the U.S. Treasury in response to the September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen treasury compliance review. It could easily be months before we get a response from Treasury on the draft manual, but when we do, and if it is positive, which I believe it will be, then the county will need to adopt the manual so we are compliant with federal restorer grant. So, I've given it to you, but if you want a visual idea of how thick it was, that's our response. Uh, you know, it's an inch thick. So, uh, anyway, it'll take them a while to read it, I'm sure. Uh, so that's where that is, and that's in your board packet. Number three, board update, uh, status of relocation of Gulf Shore Boulevard. FEMA completed the environmental assessment, or EA, of Gulf Shore Boulevard in August of two thousand seventeen, which authorized the relocation of the road. The project worksheet, which is known as PW five ninety-one, with the authorizing funds was going to expire in December twenty seventh, I'm sorry, December of two thousand seventeen, only a few months later. It was originally issued in two thousand thirteen, so it took us four years to get this thing authorized to relocate the road. I knew we could not get the project completed before December, so I asked for a time extension until July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. The extension was just granted, uh, just a couple weeks ago, in January two thousand eighteen. I had been expecting FEMA would issue a new PW authorizing the relocation after completion of the EA, and I thought they would issue a new PW because it would reevaluate the funds, but that appears not to be the case. After reviewing the existing PW five ninety-one, and after discussion with FEMA personnel on a conference call last week, I am now satisfied that FEMA is not going to issue a new PW based upon the EA, and that the county needs to utilize existing PW to complete the relocation. There is some four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in PW five ninety-one. Virginia, the road department secretary and I submitted eighty thousand dollars worth of reimbursements yesterday, and that was actually on Friday, or Thursday, I'm sorry, for the work the road department did on clearing and building the base for relocated road. The last engineer's estimate to complete the road was some three hundred thousand dollars, and that did not take into account the county's efforts, so there should be enough funds to be, to put some sort of hardened surface on the relocated road. However, the county still does not have a signed contract with Probridge-Duberry to provide engineering services, so the final design for Gulf Shore Boulevard has not been done. The lack of a signed contract is also affecting the progress of designing and permitting the rebuilding of Aligator Drive. And to clarify the board record, the board voted to approve a contract and task orders for Duber in December fifth, and it was in my December fifth report that I would provide the board with a copy of the task orders, but I've been unable to do so because Duber can't generate task orders without a signed contract. I have spoken to Pam Bernal, EM director, I'm sorry she isn't here so she can verify this, but I spoke to her and read her what I'm gonna read you directly, and she, uh, supported it. I have spoken to Pam Bernal, EM director, and she believes we have made an adequate effort to comply with FEMA, with the FEMA super circular that she was worried about, even though she says she cannot get confirmation from FEMA. She is redoing the ad for her FEMA consultant because she has time to do it, but regarding the contract for engineering services, I'm running out of time. I believe that if there are any issues regarding the Duber contract, they could be resolved if FEMA ever reviewed the contract, but I need board direction on whether it wants to proceed with the Duber contract based upon the knowledge that both Pam and I believe we have complied with the FEMA requirements. I mean, Pam wants a consultant to assist her in viewing, and being in compliance with all the FEMA regulations, that's fine, but we don't have, we're running out of time on this, on this designing project, and so I'd like to move forward based upon the knowledge we have.
Pleasure of the board.
Making a motion and then move forward.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second and discussion.
Second by Commissioner Likely. Discussion.
Oh, Alan, do you think you've got another meeting to get it going?
I, I think so, Commissioner. We have, we have been through this, uh, Mrs. Chu and I have talked about, we talked with Duber, I talked with Pam. Pam, and I don't, and I understand Pam's position. She's, uh, they have this new super circular, it's out, it's complicated, the FEMA's tightening their rules, but, and she wants a consultant to assist her in making sure that as we move forward, everything is compliant. But based on what she knows, and based on what I know, I think we are compliant, but she doesn't have her consultant, you know, under contract to assist her in that review. So, she's made an attempt to talk to FEMA directly about it, and she's not getting, you know, a final answer. Well, I can tell you, you almost never get a final answer to FEMA. Um, but I don't know what, you know, I'm just here to, to, to do what I can to help you all and help the citizens resolve these problems down there, and, you know, I'll defer to you all, but-
But if we don't do nothing, you're gonna lose it.
Well, it becomes more problematic, yes, that's correct. I don't know that we'll get another extension on Gulf Shore Boulevard or not, and it's been four years. I mean, I feel comfortable moving forward, but I realize it's taxpayers' money, and you all are responsible for that money.
We do have a motion. Do we not have a motion?
Motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes. Motion by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner-
Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chu, then we'll get the contract signed, I presume, Mr. Chu.
Sure.
Uh, all right, and it's not your fault, I just wanna, I was wondering why you're looking at me? Well, I wonder about that. You know, I'm getting older, and somebody- Okay, number four, provide board with update of Triumph Indy held in Apalachicoa on January twenty-fifth. There was an overflow crowd in the boardroom, this room, last Monday because the Triumph Board announced it was ready to begin the review process of some hundred and nineteen pre-application it has received. The Triumph staff economist, Dr. Rick Harper, made a detailed presentation of what a high-scoring application will contain. In summary, a high-scoring application would show sustainable economic activity resulting from Triumph funding, and what a low-scoring application would contain, and that would be a duplication of existing facilities, i.e. no new boat ramps, a low level of existing local match, supplying existing funds, is using Triumph funds to, uh, instead of other funds to fix leaky pipes, as he said, and the quality of life projects, meaning Triumph is not here to build better parks. They want to do something economically, and they want to stimulate the economy and, and show it throughout the future. A good application would also have a specific scope of work with measurable deliverables. Triumph wants to know what it's getting for its money. The result of Dr. Harper's presentation was a list of some twenty-four projects that did not meet eligibility requirements. None of the projects submitted for work in Franklin County was on the list, so that means all ten of the projects submitted by the county in the two cities meet the minimum criteria for eligibility. Each applicant will now get a letter from Triumph advising what steps the applicant should take. The general step will be to submit a full application for proposed project. In that full application, there's a question. Does the county commission support the project? It is not a requirement that applicants ask the county commission for support, but the Triumph Board is going to take that into consideration when the applications are reviewed. As the board is aware, it has not been asked to make any comments on any of the city's applications. It is unknown when anyone will make a request to the county, but the Triumph Board stated at the meeting they thought it would take an applicant forty-five days to complete a full application. So, I expect in the next two to three months, the board will be hearing from applicants. And I did speak to Susan Skelton yesterday, and she did say that their staff is overwhelmed trying to respond to everybody, so it could easily be more than two to three months. The board needs to remember that only fifteen million dollars of Triumph funds is dedicated to projects in the county, and yet the current listed project has some eighteen millions of funds requested, and that includes a two million dollar request for the armory. Another hundred and twenty million dollars of Triumph funds will be distributed competitively throughout the counties, the eight counties, but we have no idea whether any of our projects will be competitive with projects outside of Franklin County. And the current list of applications is not the only set of applications the county may be presented with. The Triumph Board will continue to accept new applications until all the funds are dedicated, so there may be future projects that are more meritorious than what is currently on the list. As an example, the board will be presented with a, with its final economic study of the airport sometime in February or March, and that study may indicate the county should seek Triumph funds for something at the airport. And anecdotally, the school board has submitted three projects to Triumph, but they were submitted late, so they're also in the hopper, but you, but nobody knows the merits of those because Triumph hadn't reviewed them yet. So, there, there are more things working in, in Triumph than we have, uh, knowledge about right now. So, I just tell you that as a background for item number five. Restore update. As the board is aware, the county has held off developing its restored projects, its listed restored projects. I recommend that the board continue to hold off developing a list of restored projects until we get a better idea of what is going to be funded by Triumph. Restored projects can be environmental, economic development, or infrastructure projects. So, it may be that economic development or infrastructure projects the Triumph Board does not want to fund might be something the county does want to fund through restore. Specifically, as an example for us, if the Triumph Board does not fund the armory, then the county, then the county may want to consider putting the armory on the project restore list. There is no, no timeline to submit projects for restore because those funds are dedicated to the county and are reserved until the county commission decides how to spend them. Ultimately, in fifteen years, the county will have some twenty-three million dollars of restore funds reserved for it in the U.S. Treasury. The Triumph funds are going to be allocated much more quickly, so the county might want to wait a bit to see how Triumph goes before developing its restore projects. I say this for the benefit of the county, but this also applies to cities as well. The cities may see what they get funded or not funded, and then they may want to change their restore requests. So, I think it's a best for everybody. I spoke to Bill McCarthy briefly, and he also thought it was the best for the cities. So, I, I think that, uh, we ought to wait till Triumph gives us a better indication what's gonna be funded, and then we can decide what to do with restore. That, that's my recommendation to you all.
Any, any-
I apologize for speaking so rapidly.
Any comments from the board? Is Mr. Pierce on the restore?
Alan, the eighteen million dollars you're talking about, that, that the two cities and the counties have come up with projects for the Triumph, and that's not including the school board.
That is not including the school board.
So, we don't know how much money they're asking for.
No, sir. That's online, I don't, I just looked at Bill because he might've gone online. The Triumph, the, the other, the school or projects, supposedly on the Triumph list now, but I haven't gone to see what it is, so I don't know how many. I know there are three projects, uh, because someone told me that there were three, but I have not looked.
And even though some of these projects meet the original criteria, there's still other criteria that you've gotta meet, such as matching funds and other things.
Yes, I don't want to mislead any-
There's a lot of different criteria. All the Triumph Board says is that they were eligible.
Yes. I mean, it's, Commissioner, I'm, Mr. Chairman, you're exactly right.
There's still a lot more things that you gotta do when you do this full-blown application.
Right.
You're gonna, you got to meet a lot more criteria other than just being eligible.
Right, and so, the, and the Triumph Board is gonna be selective, so even though that we all got past the first hurdle, we may not get past the second hurdle. I don't, we don't have any idea yet. We all may fail the second hurdle, we just don't know.
Okay. Have they done any?
They ain't funded nothing.
They haven't funded anything.
Well, we got good shit.
We're gonna buy every other county.
I, I will tell you that they, they, in my opinion, and I just, this is my opinion, the, the Triumph Board was trying to be cooperative, and they kept saying over and over again to the Triumph staff, we want to be partners with all the applicants, we want to be partners to help you change your counties and be economically successful in the, in the coming years. But in order to do that, they allowed the applicants, those twenty-four projects that were considered to be ineligible, they allowed them to revisit their applications and put them back in the hopper. Well, if you continue to let people come back in, one, that occupies the Triumph staff time trying to help people get back into the pot, and then you don't have any time to, to ferret out who's good or who's bad.